Today is Tuesday, March 26, 2019. I call the meeting to order. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Zarnik.
Here.
Trustee Feiter.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Petry.
Here.
Trustee Prackno.
Here.
We have every board member here tonight. And I'm sure you recognize a different face sitting here. Much nicer, no, I wouldn't say that, George's not here. Mr. Bill Payne is filling in for Mr. Nikabaka, who's not here tonight. So, Bill, we appreciate having you here as usual. Bill has been our, really for a land acquisition attorney and our backup attorney for a long time, right?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, good time. So, we're glad to have you here. And, you know, normally George makes fun of me, so I'm assuming that you won't be making fun of me tonight.
No, I won't be making fun of you.
We're in good shape, right? Okay. With that said, we move on now to the Pledge of Allegiance Invocation. Tonight, we have the invocation from our very good friend, excellent pastor over at Living Hope Church. Pastor Gates, if would you please?
Shall we pray? Our heavenly Father, we approach your throne, Lord, boldly because you allow us to, but humbly, God, because we couldn't get there any other way except for what Christ has done to make that way for us. And so, we're so grateful that you love us, that you care about us, and that you want to hear what's on our hearts, Lord. One of the things that you challenge us with over and over with through your word, Father, is that we are not to make life about ourselves, but to make life about something bigger and greater than us, ultimately, to make it about you. So, Father, I pray today that you'll help us with that. That's a challenge for us as human beings. And right here in this room is a number of people that are strong leaders, Father, and they make such a difference for the sake of our community. But, Lord, we know that a meeting like this doesn't really work unless a group of strong, intelligent people can come together and not make life about themselves, but make it about something bigger and greater. So, Lord, I ask you for wisdom today, for these people, for all of us, Lord. And I pray, God, that you'll help us as we approach you with the matters of this meeting tonight. And most of all, Lord, our desire is to know you and to give you glory. And I pray that you'll help us in that way. Lord, we know that you are where our help comes from, so we look to you tonight for help. We pray this in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. Folks, please be seated. Pastor, hang on a second. Before I come down, say something. I'll say something. Tonight, as we talk and give a little brief update on Elk Grove cares, the reason I want to, Pastor, stick around is Pastor Gates has been instrumental in reaching out to the faith community here in Elk Grove as we work on this process through the whole community. And we have found a lot of support and needed help from the faith groups here in Elk Grove Village. We've got a diverse community, and they've really reached out. But the reason we've done so well with it is because of Pastor Gates is reaching on our behalf and working with. As a matter of fact, I'll give a little update. If you want to stick around a couple minutes, I'm going to give an update to the community, how it's going, how many people are involved now, and where it's headed. So, I appreciate again everything you've done, your help, your support. And Pastor Gates went through it himself with a family member, and he knows it firsthand. And, you know, it's a tough battle. It's a tough battle, but we're going to keep on fighting here, and we're going to make a difference. We truly are.
Well, you know, one of the young ladies in our church was a part of the program. And just recently, in fact, she just talked to me Sunday. She came up to me to tell me that she was, has been six months clean, you know, and it's been a result of the program. And she's had a little bit of a fumble recently, but not full-fledged. But she assured me, she came up to me for prayer this past Sunday and to let me know that she was doing well. So, I told her we were proud of her. And of course, I want to tell you, we're proud of the fact that we have a program like that. So, thank you.
Well, it's her mother's the one that grabbed me at church that one day was there, speaking in the church, and she goes, "I want to thank you, Mayor. My daughter's in your program." And I talk about getting to you and tugging at your heartstrings. They really did it. But, you know, we know the average person fails seven times. They don't strike out once, they don't strike out twice, they strike out two and a third time. But if you stay persistent, you continue, you do it, you can make it work. And she's an example with support and always helps have God on your side, too.
That's right.
And that, so some chuckles for you as always, Pastor.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything you've done.
Oh, yes, thank you too.
Thank you. We move on now to approval of the minutes of March 12, 2019.
I move that we approve the minutes and dispense with the readings.
Second. Your motion by Trustee Petry. I say by Trustee's honor, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show you an ass approval. We've got a special presentation that Trustee Feiter's going to make in a minute. Go through a few items before we do it. We've had kind of a busy past couple of weeks here. On Thursday, March 14, we had our, what is it they said, the 31st, Lori Exchange, Students' Japanese Exchange?
I believe so.
Yeah, 31st year of exchange students coming with Elk Grove High School. A new teacher for the first time in the 31 years. And very interesting young man. He actually grew up here in Elk Grove and then moved away and came back. And it was very nice to see all the students from Japan come here. And then, we also had a chance to meet with Mike Palin from Microphone Brewery. They got their event coming up on April 27. Went through some things on that with them. And again, he's, does a character coalition as a charity this year that they're going to help out with, and we're very happy with that. Also, on last Tuesday, March 19, the Technology Park had the open house for realtors in the field. There's a big crowd there, very big crowd. And the first building right there in Oakton, big, beautiful.
We looked nonexistent in this.
Yes. They could hold the Bahamas Bowl in that building. It was huge. I thought our Public Works Garage was big. That would easily fit inside that building.
Yeah.
So, that went very well. We're excited about that. Then that night, we had our budget workshop. That is the budget that we'll be working with over the next 12 months. Overall, the budget, the budget went down 35%. A lot of that decreases because of Public Works Building, the two fire stations almost complete, big expenses on that. But what's important is the general fund of our budget went down by seven and a third percent, which is very good. I appreciate staff, Mr. Romo, your department heads, and everyone for doing a good job on that, held the line. And with the good job we're doing on managing the money, that's what allowed us this year, for the 12th consecutive year, on the general fund side of property tax, we've not raised them. And this year, we were very fortunate not to raise any property taxes, pension, debt, or the general fund. So, we're excited about that, and the budget is one of the main reasons we're able to do that. We're managing the money very well, delivering service excellent, and we're happy that we're able to do that again, you know, on the community. And not only freeze it, we remember, we eliminated vehicle stickers not long ago. That's like a tax deduction for everybody. So, we're glad to do that. And again, Mr. Romo, we're going to have a surplus.
Oh, yes, sir.
This fiscal year that ends, the end of April, April 30, we're going to have a surplus. This has got to be fifth or sixth straight year that we've had a surplus. So, we're very excited. That went so well. Also, we had tonight at Camila Hall, we had John Dallas from the enclave, give us an update what's going on with the enclave here in Elk Grove. And we had John McCabe from Cook County Forest Reserve talking about what's going on with the forest preserve. And what's amazing is we've always been saying, which is true, more people visit Bussy Woods every year than Yellowstone Park. The amazing numbers, I didn't know quite the number, 60 million people a year. Was I right? 60 million people a year visit Bussy Woods. Think about it, 60 million. I want to make sure I heard that right.
Did I hear you?
No, no, no.
The whole forest preserve.
All the forests. How much, oh, you didn't say Bussy Woods. That's right. My bad. All the woods. I thought that seemed like a lot of people. But we do know in here.
If you go over by something, that's great.
Yeah, that was, we do know that they do have more visitors than Yellowstone Park every year, Bussy Woods. And you talk about the bike trails, Dave left, Dave Simmons from the bike trail. The bike trails are well used, and the bridges put in by the village and all the rest, really went very well. So, glad on that. Couple other things go through quickly here. Remember last year, we talked about, we had the Principal of the Year from Elk Grove High School here of Illinois. We had the Teacher of the Year from Elk Grove High School the year before. We also had the Superintendent of the Year nationally from high school district 242 in Elk Grove. Well, this year, we have the Principal of the Year for North Cook County, Principal Harrington from Grove Junior High School. So, we're very excited about that.
I didn't know that.
Yeah? He was the Principal of the Year from North Cook County, Junior High Principal of the Year by the Illinois Principal Association, they named him. So, John Harrington from Grove Junior High. So, we're excited about the recognition everyone's getting. And Pastor Gates, what we want to talk about is, as everyone knows, nine months ago, we started the Elk Grove Cares Program. The program where we help those that have the disease of addiction. The disease of addiction. And it's been going well. I did a lengthy interview with the Herald a few weeks ago, and just wanted to give an update now to the community on this. We've now had 16 people come in for treatment and help. Of the 16, 11 are still going through the process. And some people say, "Well, that means five." That kind of success rate is unbelievable. As Pastor mentioned, six months now with a young lady. She had a little tough time, but she's back, she's still going. And that's the whole thing behind it. We have to have the stamina to beat this disease. We can't go light, we got to work hard. One of the things that really shocked me was there is a young woman who came in our program back on August 31 of this year. So, that is now, what, seven months ago. Again, it's not just opioids. She came in for alcohol, addicted alcoholic. And she is still maintaining her sobriety to this date. It's the longest she's been sober in years, seven months. Very proud of it. So, it's not just opioids, not just heroin, it's also addiction to alcohol. We actually two come in for alcohol. One is out battling again, I guess, but she has stayed sober for seven months. And that means a lot. So, we're going to keep on going. Out of the 16 people, one, two, three, four are from not Elk Grove, but 12 are Elk Grove residents. Two are from Schaumburg, right next door to us. So, people in Schaumburg coming over to Elk Grove for help. And it really means something. They hear about it from Facebook, from officers. Judge has referred two people here. So, it is something that we continue to work on. And just ironically today, and I appreciate, Lord, you getting this out for me, Crane's had an article, opioid deaths are still on the rise, are still on the rise. Since 2007, opioids' deaths have tripled here in Illinois, and it's still going up. We've got to battle that because, like I said before, even if you feel that it's a self-inflicted wound, addiction, it affects your life. My own son, Carr, was broken into not long ago. He left it unlocked. He left it unlocked, got in there, his wallet was in there. He was very fortunate, they dropped his wallet, took his cash, his card, but left his lights and all the rest. But I honestly don't hate it. That's why I tell you, he's not addicted, yet he's a victim of addiction. He felt the disease like the addict himself feels the disease. That's what I'm telling you. So, you may not have some concerns with them, but it affects you even if you're not part of it. And two things on that. One, lock your car. The vast majority, am I right, Chief? The vast majority, if not all of them, would be gone away if you lock it. These people, they're looking for quick money. They want to see if you have change in your car, like my son, cash in a wallet. They want it quickly, easily, to go out and get the next fix. You lock your car, they walk right by. Reason I know that, because my other son lives right across the street, his cars are locked, nothing happened to his cars, right across the street. So, first off, lock your cars. They'll pass them by. Secondly, it shows how it can affect you even if you're not an addict. So, we want to make sure we help them to reduce crime, to reduce other issues with it in your own yard. So, it's going well. Pastor, again, I can't thank you enough for all you've done. We're a team, we're going to keep working as a team, we're going to beat this. We're going to make a difference. So, thank you. Open houses, we talked about in our budget, the fire station and the Public Works Garage all being done. Mark your date, two months from now, less than two months, May 18, Saturday, we're going to have an open house for a new fire station on Fargo. That's the new one that's going to be combining the one from Oakton and Greenleaf, a new one, and the new fire station on Meacham. And the new Public Works, well, redone Public Works, like brand-new, right?
Yes, sir.
Redone Public Works facility on Meacham behind the fire station, actually on Beast Field, behind the fire station. So, remember last January, we had the open house dedication, the new Public Works facility on Devon? On May 18, you'll be able to see our two new fire stations and our revamped Public Works facility on Beast Field, the west side one.
Question?
Yes.
Why are we doing them all?
Because we.
Would we have a tour bus going from building to building?
No, we thought it would be easier, well, just for staff and everyone. The Meacham station and public works on Beast Field made sense, they're right next to each other.
Right there, but the other one's on the other side of town.
And we want to do Fargo. It's going to be open for a long enough time, people can come look at one, make a trip to the west side to the other one, or vice versa. And with the holiday or the summer vacations coming up and all the rest, that was the only weekend we could find.
In May?
Yeah, because they can't, we can't go beginning of May because they actually want to start finishing up moving in. We're actually pushing our guys to be fully in by May 18. The next week is Memorial Day, then after that starts the summer holidays. So, we try to get everyone together, but I think we'll be fine. I think people can hopefully see a tour of the village.
I could see the Meacham and those together, but.
Otherwise, we'd have to wait maybe until the fall for the other one. We thought we'd like to do them all, brand-new, just opening up, just like we did with the Public Works facility. If you go see the Public Works on Beast Devon now, it's being well-used, it's kind of usable condition now. So, we thought we could show everything brand-new to everybody before it really gets a lot of use going on and all that. So, that's why we did the one thing. But we tried to get it in where we could with the holiday coming up.
Well, if there's a timeline, but I just, people going from one side of town to the other, I just don't.
They'll be able to see the beautiful Elk Grove that way.
Yeah, if they do.
They'll go down.
Or they won't.
So, our hope is they can see both if they want to. Also, we went to Tom Busby's retirement. Tom Busby, the director of the Park District, just retired. And he left, that was last week, went over there and said goodbye to Tom, did a great job. And again, we worked so well with the Park District, like we do with the library and all the other governance, we partnered together on so many things. And Tom kept that connection going when, to go for Mike Brotman, and kept it going. So, we want to make sure we continue that strong partnership. One thing I want to address real quickly, I know, Pat, you're waiting patiently. I know a lot of people asking questions. Brittany's Bistro just opened up, which is a place that has video gaming. Believe it or not, Brittany's Bistro in the Town Center was approved by this board over a year and a half ago, close to two years ago. It took them time getting the finances, everything else together, they'll open it up. We talk about as a board, we talk amongst each other about video gaming here in the village. A couple of quick things on it. This year, we should bring in between $400 and $425,000 village portion of video gaming. And that goes to a lot of things. First $100,000 goes to the road fund, which helps make up for the shortfall by not doing vehicle stickers anymore. That's ongoing funding. Use them for community events, from concerts to Oktoberfest, to the birthday picnic celebration in July with the library and Park District, Memorial Day. Those funds go back to the community in events that bring the community together and all that. We have not approved another one since that one, Brittany's, a year, over a year and a half ago. The village is kind of looking at, we think we've got a pretty good saturation point as far as these locations go. Not sure what will happen in the future, but right now, that. The good thing about them is in all the years we've had them, we've never had one issue with a patron at any of those places. No underage people going in there, no people being overserved, our police, I don't think, Chuck, we never had calls, no issues. And what's nice is they fill up vacant stores, they keep the property tax going in there, they generate good money for the community that we can give back to the community. And again, if you don't want to do, go there, you don't have to go there. But they've been good on the village. But I know a lot of people say, "How many are we going to have?" We've pretty much reached our saturation point on all that, and, you know, it's doing good that way, too. And again, one last thing before I get to your thing, Pat, just one last thing, is a lot of people are confused. We, as we said before, a week from today is election day. We want to remind everyone, early voting's still going on. I know Lori, they don't get you. I think Lori said it has up to today, 700?
704.
704 people already voted early, which is good, glad about it. And just want to remind people, too, remember, elections in villages are nonpartisan, nonpartisan. Not Republicans, not Democrats, not independents, not communists, not Green Party people, socialists. We're not that. We're nonpartisan. And that's why if you look around governments, look at the wars going on in Washington, look at the wars going on in Springfield. And in most municipalities like Elk Grove, you don't have those battles. Governments work good here locally because we're not partisan. We're not Democrats, we're not Republicans, we're Elk Grove Village people. And people say, "Well, that's great, Mayor, but you know, you want to see up here fighting with each other? You want to see us throwing, you want me throwing the gavel over at Trustee Zarnik or something? That's not what we want in government. We want to get things done here in Elk Grove." That could also be why our business park is filled, why we run a surplus again this year. We're not raising taxes again this year because we work together. We work for the best of the community, and that's good government. That's what we want. So, as people run for office locally on this, which is great, remember, we run as individuals to serve our community. And we're proud of how well it's been going and all that. So, please, get out and vote. Get out and vote. Local government affects you more than anything else. I talk to kids all the time, Lori's always there when I talk to students. The president may sign one out of 1,000 bills affects you, the governor one out of 500. Everything we do affects you every single day. Do I explain that, Lori, every class I talk to? And that's why I get disappointed when I don't see that many terms. So, turn out and vote. It's nonpartisan, we work on your behalf, we don't battle up here, we get along, which is, in my book, good. And remember why that's important, too. We have Fortune 500 companies coming to visit this village all the time. That new Technology Park is trying to lure some huge, big companies. If I'm a business owner, which I am, do I want to go in a town where it's inefficient government, ineffective, that can't get anything done? Or would I want to locate my business, invest 10, 50, $100 million into a town that's efficient, low taxes, and works well? We want to make sure they come to that kind of town. That's why we're doing so well in Elk Grove, we're very proud of that. So, and the budget, Mr. Romo, again, just proved again what we're saying, we're doing well that way. So, with that said, I get the beautiful opportunity to welcome Trustee Feiter, him and Chief Walsh, just got back from our, we have now a friendship agreement that may build further from that, Pernek and Bulgaria, and you want to make a presentation tonight.
No.
Trustee Feiter?
Yeah.
It's all yours.
Do you need this, Pat?
Pat, you need your, no, I'll go down if he's done.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's up, I got a copy up there. Thank you. So, let me know when you need me, Pat.
Okay. Thank you. Hello, everyone. We wanted to tell you a little bit about our trip to Bulgaria, a very nice, wonderful trip to Bulgaria. Originally, and this came out of the fact that the Bulgarian consul general came out here about a year ago and met with our mayor and talked to him about something he didn't ever knew before, that there were a lot of Bulgarians that had moved into Elk Grove and in the Elk Grove area. And they were telling us about, the consul general told us about the fact that there were classes being taught in Bulgarian language, Bulgarian culture, and we didn't know any of these things. The mayor relayed that to us. And they wanted to establish with us, the consul general did, for one, with one of his largest cities in Bulgaria, Pernek, a friendship, relationship, which is a step towards a formal sister-city relationship. And so, a delegation from Pernek came to Elk Grove Village and spent several days here. At the end of that visit, we hosted them for a big dinner. But we really didn't get to know the people at all, which was kind of a shame. Language was a problem. But they did afterwards invite us to come to visit Pernek in Bulgaria. And our mayor couldn't make it, but he said, "Pat, I know you've traveled a lot in Eastern Europe, and you probably need someone with you to protect you. So, would you be willing to go and go to Bulgaria with our police chief?" And I thought, "Well, you know, it's, it's an exciting idea." I didn't know anybody in Bulgaria, and it was the middle of winter, but I thought, "You know, let's give it a shot." And I talked to the chief, and he says, "Pat, I'm very excited, let's go." And so, we decided to go ahead, and we had a wonderful experience, our time there. We wanted to share some of our experiences with you. The reason that, part of the reason we went there was to experience their special serva festival that they have once a year. There are people from countries all over the world that come to Pernek, Bulgaria for this festival. Why don't you share a little bit with the chief? We're going to share this presentation together.
Dobrvetša, that's what I learned, is good evening in Bulgarian. Pat and I tried our best to learn what we could. And so, we went to this international festival with the Pernek delegation. And it's done once a year, it's a carnival city, and the hospitality that both Pat and I experienced was unparalleled. So, we have some pictures that we'd like to show, and hopefully, okay, there we are. So, there's the Pernek delegation, Ambassador Rubin and Minister of Culture, Anelia Slavova. And there's the ambassador's wife, and of course, Pat and I.
So, he is the U.S. ambassador to Bulgaria. And he could speak the language fluently, and he loves his post and loves being there.
So, the U.S. ambassador met you, Pat, when you were over there?
Yeah.
That was impressive.
We talked quite a bit. He was very nice.
That's impressive. Which ones, which one of you guys, which one, Pat, which one's?
The man in the middle is the ambassador.
No, which one are you, which one's the chief?
Oh, which one? Very good.
Next slide. This slide here is, again, the U.S. ambassador, Eric Rubin, and the Pernek mayor, Vara Tervarsky, I think is as close as I can get on that. So, that's us in the mayor's office there as well.
She's got a corner office. I don't have a corner office.
She has a very nice office, too.
Yeah, look at that.
And every time there's a meeting there, she would provide all kinds of goodies out on the table for us to eat. It was very, very nice.
Trustee Frankie?
Huh?
This slide up here is the municipal office and the, essentially, their village boardroom there that we were at.
And notice that they use the Cyrillic alphabet there, although this is using our alphabet as well, but the Cyrillic alphabet's the alphabet that is used by the Bulgarians.
And Pat, you can read that, right, the Cyrillic?
Yeah, it says, "Pernek Municipality."
Very good. You sent the right crew, Mayor, let me tell you that. The next slide here. We have a dinner with the members of the European Carnival Cities Federation. Bulgarians like to do everything around food, and it's not a twenty-minute or thirty-minute meal. Hours.
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 And then dancing with it.
Yes, so we'll have some slides today.
Wait, so, Pat, you and Chief dance?
Uh, there's...
You can dance together?
Together.
Oh, okay.
Nothing wrong with that.
But they, food all the time. We, one, the last full night or day we were there, we had three dinners. The last one we just couldn't do, it was just too much. But they really had wonderful tasting food and made us feel so welcome with everything they did. And here's an example of some of the food that they had out. Lots of great sausages. Bread was a real big deal. We went to one event where they had these big, round loaves of bread. And many of them would have sausages in them. And the custom there, I guess, was, at least this is how I did it, you grab a piece of the bread with your hand and just take it and eat it, and it was, it was real good.
Uh, there's me reading the local newspaper. They had lots of articles about Elk Grove, but I can't tell you what they said, but I'm sure they were all positive because they're a very friendly community.
No, wait, that's an English magazine, right, by your feet, says Police Chief.
Yeah, yeah, you know.
That's a different one. Anyway, we were on their television network there, we were in their newspapers. And, and the chief was actually interviewed by, from a newspaper in another country, I can't remember which country. Moldova? So the name of Elk Grove got out all over the place with this.
Imagine if we had a PR guy helping that, we'd really get on.
Yeah.
This is the serva festival postal, uh, poster, and again, as Pat said, the serva festival is done the third weekend in January. When we were all in that polar vortex here, we were warm and, we don't know what the temperature was because it's Celsius. Pat and I had trouble figuring that out, but we weren't as cold as you all were during that time. But the festival has about five thousand people that attend. Ninety masquerade groups from all regions of Bulgaria, Europe, Asia, Africa participate. And there were more than six thousand folks that showed up for this festival that we were part of. Next one.
The video?
We have Pat's date for the night.
Does that work at all?
This is the serva festival of 2019. And the masks in the bells are meant to scare away the spirits and bring good fortune for the next year. So that's why you'll see a lot of these masks that were made with paper mache, fur, and wool, and wood, all sorts of great.
As you can see, people dressed up in costumes like this. There were busloads constantly coming in with more and more groups from Bulgaria and from other countries with people marching in this parade and showing their costumes. And they were very friendly and, and some of them were a little crazy. They came up to us, there's this drink, what's it called?
Rakia?
Rakia. One person was squirting this drink, it's a schnapps, at us wanting us to swallow it. And, oh, it was all, it was a fun thing. Everybody was just happy and enjoying themselves. And this was the night bonfire they had, the night that the festival began. They had laser lights, fireworks, bonfires, people carrying torches. It was wild, something you might think about.
Pat, is that snow on the ground around there?
Yeah, there was snow on the ground, yes.
That's when they had Pat keep the pace for everybody, all six thousand on the drum. He did a great job.
And the chief, everybody loved the chief when he had his uniform on. They kind of ignored me, but they would always come up to him with the uniform and here you, a little girl with him.
Yeah, this, this gentleman here behind the Spider-Man balloon was an Olympic wrestler and international for the Olympics and for Europe. And when he found out we were from Elk Grove, it just, it lit up, he told his family, they were so happy to meet Americans and asking about Elk Grove, why we were here. So it was really a touching thing that we did with some folks there, so.
Well, no, they just knew Elk Grove was wrestling, so.
Met a lot of wrestlers, Mayor. They're waiting for you.
There they are, there they are.
Oh, yeah, so, so I was doing security at this point, keeping an eye on Trustee Fighter and...
Well, they have, one of the dances that people would do is they go around in circles, you've, you've probably seen this with, I'm not going to demonstrate it. At, you know, like Greek celebrations and things like that. And it's sort of, I think you take four steps to the side and then you took, take two back and then eventually you work your way around in a whole circle and there's, you know, really nice lively music playing the whole time. The man who did most of the dancing was this guy, but I got into it a little bit and it was a lot of fun, had a good time doing that, it really was.
Remember, what happened in Pernek stays in Pernek.
Stays in Pernek, okay.
Okay, the last few slides here. So Pernek is a mining town. The mine there is from eighteen ninety-one and they were, took us through the mine. We went, probably walked a good two miles through the, through the mine. It was pretty incredible to see the, from the beginning of mining with mules, all the way to machinery towards the end when that mine went down.
Now they're changing their economy now, right? The mayor was telling me when she was here that they're going, trying to become more industrial, more manufacturing, leaving the coal mining industry livelihood and going more to, am I right there?
Absolutely correct, yes.
And we saw nuclear power plants as we were coming into the town from Sofia when we first arrived.
So instead of coal for source of fuel and stuff, they use nuclear now?
Now they're going to the nuclear, yeah.
So this was Rila monastery. It's a historic monastery and cultural site in the Rodopi mountains of southwestern Bulgaria. It's in the valley of Rila, about seventy miles south of Sofia. It's a symbol of Bulgarian national identity and it's the most prominent monastery of the Bulgarian Orthodox Church. So it's really a cherished site and they, it was about, about an hour and a half it took us to get there, up in the mountains, and we, we toured there as well.
One of our dinners that night, that was our last full day and evening there, we stopped at a traditional Bulgarian restaurant on the way back. And then we went back to town in Pernek and then there was another dinner. And there was a final, the ending of the Pernek Festival, they had a celebration with the end of it. And then another dinner after that. And we were, we figured that we were going to go back and the next morning, what all we'd do is we'd go back to the hotel that night, go to sleep, and the next day we would head out to the airport and fly home. Then we got a little surprise. We were told, "Oh, no, we need you dressed up," again, suit and tie, his formal uniform, "to go to the Ministry of Interior in Sofia." And in the Ministry of, of Interior in Sofia, it's not like the Interior Ministry here that is, takes care of national parks, national lands. It's really their National Police Agency. So when he came in, they just loved to have him there, and I was okay too. And we, we had a nice talk with them and the minister's coming to Chicago.
Correct. Yeah, so the International Chiefs of Police Association have their June training and he'll be coming in. And so he presented Elk Grove Village with this ministry award for friendship, which we hope to display in our case in the lobby. And that was by Minister Miladon Marovic, and that was on television as well. So they were very excited about American law enforcement and American city government coming in. And he, he had lots of questions for us, so it was very, very interesting that we shared that with them. And of course, we have our Bulgarian flag that we were presented there as well, that we'll put in the bookcase out front.
Okay, there you go. And we wanted to thank our friends, two of our friends from American Bulgarians that are here that helped us and were so nice to us. Emile and Diane, come on up.
Well, first off, first off, thank you for your kindness and helping these two poor lost souls. I'm sure they are lost more than we realize. Those are probably the only pictures they could show, I imagine. Won't go any further than that. But we'd like to present a proclamation that I know you're going to bring back with you when you go back to Pernek. And this proclamation says the following. "A proclamation honoring the friendship agreement between the city of Pernek, Republic of Bulgaria, and the village of Elk Grove Village, whereas Elk Grove Village and the city of Pernek have committed to a friendship agreement signed on November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to promote international and intercultural knowledge and understanding. And whereas both cities have agreed to support and encourage mutual visits, to establish friendships between organizations, promote cultural exchanges, and develop mutual understanding of the citizens of both cities. And whereas Trustee Pat Fighter and Police Chief Charles Walsh enjoyed the recent visit to the city of Pernek and had a wonderful experience with the amazing people, culture, and accommodations. And whereas the city of Pernek and its people displayed a generous spirit and put on remarkable serva carnival during their stay. And whereas Elk Grove Village and the city of Pernek agree to participate and encourage, to the best of their abilities, cross-cultural events, programs that share the culture and heritage that is unique to each community in an effort to promote international and intercultural knowledge and understanding. Now therefore, I, Mayor Craig B. Johnson, and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Elk Grove Village do hereby thank the city of Pernek for welcoming the delegates from Elk Grove Village and reaffirm our commitment to returning, I'm sorry, to nurturing our friendships between Elk Grove Village, Illinois, United States of America, and the city of Pernek and the Republic of Bulgaria, dated as twenty-sixth day of March, two thousand and nineteen." Yeah, say a few words. Go, go ahead, please. You know, you're on, just, you know, that TV camera, almost four billion people right now are watching you live. Don't be nervous, they're watching you.
So we just want to thank you guys, we're happy that you enjoyed your trip, that you had a good time and they, you know, you, it sounds like you guys got a good impression of the city. We obviously want to keep this friendship moving and hopefully good things develop out of there, so we're really looking forward to working with the city.
Thank you very much. Hang on, before you go, I've got something for you folks. Extra ones, because you had to put up with them all those days. Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll do that too. For you? Hang on, for each of you? There you go. Extra, because you had to deal with Pat, so, there you go. And these are actually the village logo. And what we'd like to do, if you can't go down, you want to get a picture of us? Trustees, why don't you come on down? Let's get the whole board down, come on. We'll do a picture right down the other side. Did you want me to get you and Sam over this side? Good? Make sure you tell the mayor you go down. Hang on, we got something for each. No. Oh, this is your sacrament, huh? Really? On July twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Well, thank you, it's very nice, thank you very much, appreciate it. Again, thank you for, thank you for all your help too, appreciate it. Folks, thank you again, thank you very much. Okay, we move on to, see how nice it is to have a, you know, no, no comments about a little windy or anything like that, just keep quiet, just sit there, very happy, I appreciate that. Move on now, trustees report, we'll start with Trustee Fakna.
She got tired of hearing about the trip and left.
Well, okay, then we'll start with Trustee Fighter.
No further report.
Trustees are there.
Thank you. Again, scholarships are up, so there are six one thousand dollar scholar, for the Frank J. Zarnik scholarships available for Elk Grove Village residents that are graduating this year from high school. It can assist you in your endeavors next year. Applications are on the zarnikgolf.com and Elk Grove website sites, and they must be received by May third. So get those in and hopefully help you, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Fakna.
Excuse me, I have one question for the Zarnik Coffee. Do you have a date yet for this year?
Oh, yes, the golf outing is August seventh.
Are you sure?
You're sure about that?
One o'clock.
Okay.
Let me double check. Are you okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to make good note.
You were called on.
I know.
We're making sure it's good for at least five minutes.
Lily?
Trustee Peter.
I went over twenty-five hours.
No report.
I went to all the things.
Nice haircut. Looks good. Trustee, listen.
August ninth, it's a Friday. Thank you.
Still changing.
Trustee, listen. Trustee Fakna.
I, I hear I was already called. Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday is the Winter, the Winter Farmers Market at Christus Victor Church. That's Saturday, March thirtieth, from eight AM to one PM. They have some wonderful hydroponic vegetables, they have some Brett Artisians, they have some craft things, they have doggy treats, they have all kinds of things, and it's just a really nice little fair, so if you can make it, it's this Saturday from eight AM to one PM. Christus Victor Church is right across from the movie theater. I also want to mention, we talked about the Japanese exchange program. Our Elk Grove High School's exchange students right now are in Termini and Mares, our Italian sister city. And they left last Wednesday and will be there till the end of this week, so they're, from what I understand, they're having a wonderful time and an excellent educational opportunity. And last but not least, for the first time, Berkshire Hathaway Realtors on the corner of Rowling and Nergi Road are hosting a free shad- shr- a free shred. I know, I can't say that.
That's what I'm reporting.
Oh, I didn't know you heard that.
Sorry, I didn't know you knew about this one.
Of course I did, it was all over the Facebook.
Do you want me to stop and you read it?
No.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, they are hosting a free shredding event on Saturday, April sixth, from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty AM in their parking lot. And the address again is ten-ten Rowling Road, the corner of Nergi and Rowling. So it's an opportunity to do some little early spring cleaning and get some of that paperwork out of your house. And, did you have a question? Oh, then that concludes my report.
Um, speaking of Berkshire Hathaway, do you know that, um, he was going to give a million dollars a year for life to any of his employees if they got the first two rounds, all the picks right? Not Warren Buffett was going to do it.
Okay, not Berkshire Hathaway here in Elk Grove.
No, no, no. But he owns Berkshire Hathaway. But if any of his employees had gotten the first two rounds, all thirty-two, plus sixteen, so forty-eight picks right, he would have given a million dollars a year for the rest of life.
There isn't actually a guy that's got the whole thing already. I mean, to the sixteen, they hit him on the news this morning.
Not his employee. He should go get a job at Berkshire Hathaway. Really, someone got it all?
Yeah, so far, yeah.
Well, now Tiara got all final sixteen teams, but he missed the other game. He got everyone. Because they say if you get every game, it's impossible. It's like one in a trillion or something like that.
A couple of them were like Cretish picks and just picked it because he knew somebody went to school there, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, Trustee Frankie.
Oh, that's okay, I just wanted to talk about the recycling program over at Berkshire Hathaway.
I feel bad enough already.
Also, the Zarnik Golf Outing is August ninth. That's correct, so I'm done here.
Okay, we move on now to the Accounts Payable warrant for March twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
I move that we pay bills in the Accounts Payable warrant for March twenty-sixth, in the amount of two million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, sixty-eight dollars. amount of two million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, sixty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents.
We're motion by trustee Petry, second by trustee Zarnik, that's the amounts we can pay Mr. Payne tonight?
Right.
Yeah, the sixty-six cents worth, right? Okay, that's fine. Lloyd, call the roll, please.
Trustee Factor.
Yes.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Listener.
Aye.
Trustee Petry.
Aye.
Trustee Prackno.
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik.
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. Considered, tonight we have A as in apple through N, I've used it before but I like it, nanu nanu, and I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by trustee Zarnik, a second by trustee Frankie. Staff, the board, now if there's any questions, comments, or any of the considered items tonight. If not, anybody in the audience, considered items. Okay, seeing no objection, hearing no objection, we record the vote as previously demonstrated, six to nothing. We move on now to boards and commissions. Oh, we do have one item, you're right. And that would be, of course, what we did earlier with common with Edison, Mr. Rommel?
Mayor, Board of Trustees, good evening. We do have three items under the regular agenda which pertain to one particular topic, and that is the annexation of property on Midway Court that's currently owned by ComEd. Used to be a office building, two office buildings, and ComEd plans on tearing those buildings down, redeveloping it into a substation, electrical substation. We've had a number of meetings and public hearings on it, including a public hearing tonight on the annexation agreement, and we do have three items that need to be approved in order, and I bring to your attention that the first item, which is a resolution authorizing a pre-annexation agreement, redevelopment agreement, that requires a vote from the mayor to ensure we have a supermajority.
Okay, so I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We motion by trustee Listener, second by trustee Frankie, any questions, comments, or concerns? Again, this is a huge, huge reinvestment, ComEd's making Elk Grove, and it's going to help our new data center immensely. So, data center and Technology Park, my bad. Lloyd, call the roll, please, and do include me.
Trustee Frankie.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Aye.
Trustee Petry.
Aye.
Trustee Prackno.
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik.
Aye.
Trustee Factor.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes seven to nothing, Mr. Rommel?
The second item pertains to the actual ordinance which annexes a property, rezones it, and provides a special use permit in accordance with our zoning code to allow for the operation of the substation on the property along Midway Court.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by trustee Zarnik, a second by trustee Factor, Lloyd, call the roll, please.
Trustee Listener.
Aye.
Trustee Petry.
Aye.
Trustee Prackno.
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik.
Aye.
Trustee Factor.
Yes.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. Last item, Mr. Rommel.
The final item pertains to the final plan of subdivision for the property, now that it's officially been annexed to Elk Grove Village, we do have a one-lot subdivision which has been included in your agenda packet.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listener, Lloyd, call the roll, please.
Trustee Petry.
Aye.
Trustee Prackno.
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik.
Aye.
Trustee Factor.
Yes.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Listener.
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. That can finish the regular agenda for tonight, plant commission, Mr. Rommel?
We have no items this evening for the plant commission or the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, now we move on to boards and commissions, committees, youth committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
Just want to mention again about the Elk Grove Youth Committee's scholarships, we have seven one thousand dollar scholarships, who give it away? Just all you have to do is fill out the application and get it into us by May third, we will not accept them any later, and then we will let the winners know by the end of May, May thirty-first, who won. Again, we have four thousand dollars, four extra scholarships because of Microphone Brewery making a donation for a fundraiser that they did, so we'll have that for about five years, four years, that extra four thousand dollars, so thank them for that. Seven thousand dollars worth of scholarships, get your applications in, don't wait till the last minute, that's it.
Okay, move on now to business leaders forum, trustee Petry?
My fellow will take care of that.
Trustee Listener.
I co-chairman.
Thank you, Jim. Tomorrow morning, we'll be making another ambassador visit to Industrial Modern Pattern and Mold, a very interesting company on Nicholas, and we're looking forward to that, and that concludes Jim's report.
Okay, move on now to the cable television committee, trustee Listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April third, the various towns that are part of our cable committee will be meeting in Pelotine to discuss the renewing of the franchise with Comcast, so we're looking forward to that meeting and see what's going on, and that concludes that report.
Now, their, their agreement, how long does any agreement usually last?
I don't know, I'm not sure.
Is that twenty years?
It's such negotiations, at least ten years.
Make sure we protect that, channel six, channel six, channel six, channel six.
I gave my life for that many years ago.
No question, and thank you for that.
And we insisted that trustee Petry will be joining us at that meeting, so.
Good. Okay, health and community services, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you, Saturday, April sixth, the Joe McEnry replenishment Elk Grove Community blood drive is going to be held from eight AM till noon in the conference room in the lower level of the Charles J. Zetic Municipal Building. The drive is, excuse me, the drive is named after one of our firefighters' fathers who received twenty-seven units and was a lifetime donor. He requested we replenish the blood that was needed and encouraged all to donate, so please come and honor Joe and save lives, thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on now to information committee, trustee Listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out a couple of news items on the village website. One is the village is working with scientific wildlife management on gathering information on coyotes that may be roaming around the village to protect our residents and their pets, and we're hoping in the near future to get that information on our Elk Grove app, so it'll be a little easier if someone's out and walking around and they see an animal and they can report it. And the other item is, we're now part of another social media site, it's called Next Door, I believe we're part of Centec South for some reason. They have a lot of information on that, on home sales, other various things for sale. Elk Grove has been posting a few things on there, and it looks like an interesting site, it's much calmer than the more other sites, which I won't get into, Mr. Mayor, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Listener.
If, I don't know if it falls on you, we didn't mention anything about the leaf pickup?
Oh, that's a good point. If you've seen this before, April first, starting Monday, this coming Monday, April first, and for that week, we're going to do a special leaf pickup here in the village, and so put them out by seven AM on Monday, April first. If, for some reason, we get, and they're saying maybe snow on Saturday, so if for some reason we get a freak snowstorm or anything like that, our backup date will be one week later, starting on April eighth. So, April first, have your leaves out by the curb, and I know that I draw on the village, I see a lot of people who do have leaves racked up in the parkway. This will give you a chance to get rid of them, put them out in the street, remember, no branches or anything, nature leaf pickup, just like we would have normally had in the fall, and we'll be by throughout the whole village during that week. We're not sure quite where we're starting, so everyone should have them out by Monday morning, April first, seven AM, we'll do a special leaf pickup. And without a suggestion from somebody, we never would have came up with this idea, so thank God, there's people out there, give us a suggestion, we never would have known to do that.
We do listen.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, definitely. Okay, recycling waste committee, trustee Factor, let's hear about Berkshire Hathaway?
No, that's already been done.
I'm sorry.
But Elk Grove is going to have its own recycling event on Saturday, June first, from nine to noon, it'll be document destruction and electronic recycling, and on Saturday, June eighth, it'll be paint and motor oil recycling between nine and noon, and both events will be at the James Paul Petry Public Works Facility on Devon, and that concludes my report.
I have a question.
Is that trustee Frankie?
Sorry, no, it's, a resident asked me this today, and I want to make sure, because it's, or it's waste, basically, the bag pickup or the sticker pickup, when does that officially start? I mean, people don't know on the website, it's April.
Fifteenth.
It's April first.
First?
Is it right, is the website right? Okay, I just wanted to check and make sure, is it, I mean?
You get it right from her, she knows.
So it is April first, in case anybody's wondering when to put out their grass bags or whatever, they're doing a lot of cleanup the last few weekends, and they were wondering, like, you know, clippings. What about the large branch pickup, when is that?
It'll be the end of April, right, will it?
Yeah.
No, yeah, the last two weeks of April.
Okay.
Well, the fifteenth, well, the first, yeah, the fifteen, yeah.
Is it done by section of the town, or do the people just put them out there for the two weeks?
I think the large branch, they have to call, you have to call.
Oh, you call?
Yeah.
On the large branch?
For the large branch.
Okay.
The small branch, they take already?
Well, they'll take if you bind them together with the waste management, well.
Right, they take it already, right?
Yeah, it just seems like, last weekend was pretty nice, and everybody was out doing a lot of things for the first time, and they came up with all these questions, and I wasn't sure, so, so I want to make sure.
I just hope we get some weather it feel like, I mean, it's supposed to snow.
We won't do it this weekend, will we?
It's supposed to snow this Saturday. It's ridiculous.
I'm telling you, the calendar is one month off, it's just something happened, and we're actually getting February now in March, and it'll be like that, yeah.
Well, November, Thanksgiving, we had that big ice snowstorm.
Well, at the end of it though, but, I mean, it was pretty warm, then December was warm.
December wasn't bad, and then January, February, since January first, it's been crazy. Okay, parade committee, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you, the next meeting of the parade committee is April first at five thirty PM, room E of the Zetic Municipal Building, and the parade is on Saturday, September twenty-first, and that's in conjunction with our Oktoberfest, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel committee, trustee Frankie.
No report.
Judiciary planning, zoning committee, trustee Prackno.
Thank you, the J P Z committee will be meeting on Monday, April first, at nine AM, up in the Churnet Conference Room to discuss parking restrictions within the industrial park. It's a committee meeting, but the public is welcome if they would like to attend or have some comments or concerns that they'd like to address. So that's once again, this Monday, April first, at nine AM, in the Churnet Conference Room. That concludes my report.
Again, we hear a lot about that, people say, where does this board get its information? These committee meetings that we're talking about tonight is where we get our information from. You know, the committee does a lot of legwork, so we don't have to, there's a whole board, they gather information, they get comments, they get public input, staff input, and then they make a recommendation back to the board. The board can ask questions, the board can attend the meetings if they so desire, whatever, and then, that's right, by the time it gets here, it's been well-vetted, well-viewed, but all those meetings are open to the public. Mr. Petzel goes to a lot of meetings, plant commissions, zoning board of appeals meetings.
He's already coming to this one, he told me.
Huh?
He's already coming to that.
See, coming to this meeting?
Excellent.
So, it's men out there to give you all the information you want, it's all there for you to gather and get your involvement, by the time comes here, we get strong recommendation, we review all the minutes, we review the information, unless we see something unusual or ask questions, it's pretty much, but all those meetings are public and open to the public to come to. So, everything's happening out in public like they should, nothing's hidden, but again, people, some people say there's apathy in this town because things going well. I mean, when we had the candidates forum, it's two thousand fifty-nine, this room was packed, when the board got there, it was almost empty. So, but it is out there, if anyone's interested, they're more than welcome to come and attend the meeting on April first. Capital improvements Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you, the village's private participation concrete replacement program will once again be open to property owners in the village, so you can refer to our newsletter, which is coming out very shortly, for the information on this, as well as information on the twenty nineteen street maintenance program. We are required to obtain an annual national pollutant discharge elimination system permit. As part of this process, we complete and submit a report to the Illinois Environmental Protections Agency, which outlines our efforts across the six areas to reduce and eliminate stormwater pollutants. The six areas are public education and outreach, public participation involvement, illicit discharge direction and elimination, construction site runoff control, post-construction runoff control, pollution prevention, good housekeeping for municipal operations. The village intends to file its next annual report in May. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Airport update this Friday at noon, suburban air commission, we host a meeting, I'm chairman of the committee, our commission still, we're hosting a meeting, we're going to start doing preliminary look at runway, runway rotation plans for when the last runway gets done. This is critical time, this is critical time, this is critical time for our community and all communities around O'Hare. We want to make sure that no one gets too much noise, all of us have to take some noise. We all enjoy the benefits of the airport, we all have to take some of the negative of the airport, so this is big time. So far, we've heard nothing but praises on our headings, and that was a huge step for us. We unanimously supported it, and right now ONCC has been very favorable on that. What that means is, what's the turn when they come off the runway, ten degrees, fifteen, twenty, and what areas of impact by doing it? We worked hard, and especially JDA worked extremely hard to set up our heading plan that minimizes the impact on surrounding homes and spreads the noise as evenly as possible throughout the area. We don't want to overlap, so that one area gets double hits, and it took some work, but we got it done, and more importantly, unanimously, every member of SAC supported it. That was a big step for all of us, and we're excited about that. Midsummer concert classic series, oh, Mr. Payne, you get to do Mr. Knickerbocker's meeting, well, you get to announce the lineup for this year.
I don't know the lineup.
How can anyone living north of the Mason Dixon line not know Elk Grove's midsummer classic concert series lineup?
I knew it at one time.
One time?
But I forgot.
Well, I'm going to take away that sixty-six cents from you, and I'll help you on this one. The first one, which happens on the Fourth of July.
Okay.
Part of our fireworks, our big night, we start off with Melissa Etheridge.
Very nice.
Our second concert, which is on Tuesday, out here in the town center by the clock tower, we have Baz Skaggs. Our third concert, again out here, is The Commodores.
Very nice.
Our third concert is Wynonna and the Big Noise, Wynonna Judd, and the Big Noise, and our last but not least concert, we finish up out here, is Night Rangers.
Very nice.
Not bad?
Tremendous lineup.
Yeah, well, the Metalsters have a lineup like this, do they?
Not even close.
Not even close, see? That's all I care, so, I guess we're going to see you out here for some songs?
I think so.
That's what I want to hear. Of all that, of all of them, seriously, which one impressed you the most?
Probably The Commodores.
Thank you, that's what I'm hearing. Commodores had like nineteen number-one hits, they're un, the music's unbelievable, it'd be a lot of fun that night, so, and you know what? Because you do such a fine job, Bill, I'm going to give you free tickets to every one of the concerts, what do you think, Jeff, should I? Free tickets to everyone?
I don't know, I think we're paying them a lot of money, we can charge them.
Okay, well, I'll give you free ones.
Sixty-six cents.
Ten, eleven cents each.
There you go.
Okay. Special events, coming up in just two months, trustee Prackno?
Memorial Day.
And where's it going to be held?
Park District Pavilion indoors.
Thank you. Okay, no items on the liquor commission, Mr. Rommel, any items?
I have no report this evening.
And from our village clerk, everybody cover it.
Well, you did cover it, but I do want to stress that early voting is open all week long, from nine AM until seven PM this week, so it's a little bit later, and then Saturday is nine to five, Sunday is ten to four, and Monday will still be early voting at nine to five, and then Election Day.
Very good, and unfinished business, as I said, Mr. Knickerbocker, nothing under Mr. Payne, all done? Any items, any board member wishes to bring up on the new business items before we go out to the public? None? None? Well, we have our usual crowd, the one gentleman, he left, was he for an item, taken care of? Okay, um, Mr. Petzel, how's the world treating you?
Excellent for Tuesday.
That's like, you, you miss Mr. Knickerbocker and Mr. Payne doing a good job?
I'd like to commend, uh, attorney Mr. Payne for stepping up tonight.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
You want that because he does the review each year, so that's good. Yes, Helen, question?
Uh, you're talking next month at our senior center?
Yes, April, April twenty-third, looking forward to it.
I opened my presentation today at the senior center, and my first thing I could write, my list was voting.
That's right.
So, everybody on the third of this, the other, these are your local people, this is where you get all your information, this early voting, so please vote.
Vote, 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 vote once, I mean, everyone needs to vote, 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 you know, trustee Frankie's on his eighty-fifth time, but we won't.
There's one thing I was going to say, I tried to come to your last meeting, and there were so many people, I couldn't have been here.
That was when we had the kids here.
That was the kids, yeah.
Well, yeah, once a year, we do that, we celebrate the youth, keep that in mind, it's always the first meeting of March, it's probably a good one not to, I mean, I know our fire chief, which Michael, I keep putting his head down, not looking, we saw the aisles filled, and, yeah, um, so.
But the mayor did ask about you.
I'm always thinking of you, we're good, and looking forward.
I tried to get in too, and they wouldn't let me in either, so that's why I wasn't there.
For good reason! We didn't want him in tonight, but he snuck through security, but uh, we're going to work on that, um, anything particularly you would want me to talk about next week, when I, or next month, when I come see the senior?
I did say it's good.
Okay.
I told everybody, the mayor's coming next month.
And I will announce, for the first time in twenty-two years, at least one seat will be new, first time, so we'll announce that, so we'll see what happens, it'll be interesting, okay, anything else?
Oh, yeah.
Yes?
Did you want to announce that you will be the longest, longest acting mayor?
Oh, that's right, a week from tomorrow, history will be made in Elk Grove Village, what do you think that could be, Helen?